Five, it is now seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Demi, could you please full roll?
Paul Dorn.
Here.
Karen Riedstein.
Here.
Kendra Paul, please.
Here.
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 All right, if everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is approving tonight's agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's agenda? Matt, how long do we need for a non-elective personal executive session?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion.
We approve the agenda as written with a fifteen-minute executive session.
Second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to Kichai civic groups or committees. Any civic groups or committees here to speak? Seeing none, I'll put in the plug here instead of later. Again, I want to remind everybody that the Kichai Fair is hosting their Easter Eve scramble on April 5th at 2:00 PM in Kichai City Park. All right, moving on to Kichai good news. Counsel, any Kichai good news? I have mine, I mean staff, Kichai good news.
It's warm this week.
That was.
It's cold.
I do want to call out the police department. I'm sorry guys. For all of Chief's work, he's been out doing a lot of community policing. He did some training out there. Also, people have been commenting, seeing you guys out has been really nice. So, thank you so much for your roles and for all that you guys do. Thank you very much. Any other Kichai good news? Seeing none. All right, we will move on to public forum. Demi.
Joni Harris.
All right, Joni. You can go ahead.
Joni Harris, 109 West Chippewa Street, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Property valuation assessments and property taxes are on everyone's minds and are the focus of many conversations in 2025, between neighbors, at city, county, and state meetings with elected officials. And the big question for property owners is, will there be property tax relief this year? Having passed through the Kansas House, HCR 5011 and HB 2396, these are a constitutional resolution and a House bill, will be heard by the Senate Committee for Assessment and Taxation on Monday, March 17th, with a written testimony deadline of Friday, March 14th at 9:30 AM. HCR 5011, short title, proposing to amend Section 1 of Article 11 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas to provide evaluations of residential property, commercial and industrial real property, and mobile homes, personal property, shall be determined based on the lesser of the fair market value or the average fair market value. HB 2396, short title, authorizing the use of a protest petition to limit funding of a taxing jurisdiction by property tax revenue exceeding a certain amount, establishing the acknowledging stewardship of tax revenue and appropriations at your fund, authorizing certain transfers from the State General Fund to qualifying cities and counties, and eliminating the revenue-neutral rate requirements by taxing subdivisions and the taxpayer notification process fund. Is the Kichai governing body following the proposed property tax legislation action occurring at the state legislative level? Is the city administrator monitoring and providing updates regarding the property tax discussions occurring? Has the Kichai City Council as a body or any of our elected officials submitted testimony regarding proponent, opponent, or neutral positions regarding the resolution or the bill? Are there any specific bills or resolutions that this governing body is following? Recently, in a tight special election, voters defeated a proposed $450 million USD 259 bond renewal. One of the main reasons is that property taxes are too high. In the upcoming 2026 budget season, the city of Kichai and this governing body's action will be watched closely for decisions made. Will this governing body be prepared to consider a reduction in the middle levy when the proposed budget is presented? I'll stand for any comments or questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? We will close the public conference meeting. Move on to new business, item 7A, annual property insurance renewal.
Mayor, counsel, in front of you is our annual insurance property renewal. I met with Critiser, our insurance agent, this morning, and he could not be here tonight at the last minute. So, I said, "I'll try to handle it." He promised me he would be here at the next meeting if you had any questions. So, if you don't have any questions tonight, I'll tell him not to show up at the next meeting. But if you do have questions that I can answer, he will be here at the next meeting. Our annual property insurance renewal, nothing really changed on it. Each year, we as a city go through our entire policy. We basically do an audit on everything that we have, from equipment to facilities, make sure that it's valued correctly, make sure that we still have the equipment, make sure we haven't sold it, make sure nothing has changed within the policy. So, it's a lengthy process that we go through with our agent. We meet with him several times, go through this whole policy, and then they put the numbers together and give us our renewal. This year, our annual renewal increase was 4.43%, which he explained is very good. He said his next lowest renewal was another city in Kansas at 6%. He said, "On average, they've been running about 6% to 11% on their property insurance increase." And he said, "One of the reasons for that is that our experience mod," is what they call it. If you look on your spreadsheet that I gave you, it's near the bottom. It's a gray line, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. It's six lines from the bottom. The way he explained our experience mod is, it's how many claims the city has had over a certain amount of years. So, the experience mod is on a scale of like 1 to 5, or I'm sorry, 0 to 5. The average experience mod for a city is 1.7, and we fall at a .85. He said, "That is an extremely good rating by the insurance." So, it just has to go with, our experience mod has to do with the policies and procedures that we have in place that reduce exposure to some of those claims that we may have. So, that was good to hear, that we're still low on that scale, and it helped with our premium. In addition, staying with the current policy that we have, we are eligible for, let me get to it here, what they call a dividend, okay? A dividend is, again, based off our claims, and it is a, it's a cash value that we get back at the end of the year. So, our dividend, based off our claims from last year in '24, we will get a rebate check from our insurance carrier for approximately $6,600. The year before, it was a little over $11,000. The year before that, it was $10,000. So, us, the market, a lot of other things play into that dividend, but it really helps reduce our premium when we get that dividend back on our policy. So, totally increased for our policy this year was a little over $4,000, or $4,500, with the increase of 4.43%. I will try to answer any questions that you might have. I'll try my best. If I can't, we'll get Curtis here next week to do it.
I have a question about the amount that was expected was about a 10% increase.
Yes, that's what we budgeted, yep.
And our increase was actually 4.43%.
Yes.
What happens to those budgeted dollars when we come in under budget?
Yeah, good question. So, that 5.5% difference carries forward to the budget next year under a fund balance, and then we capture that amount to go towards our projected increase in premiums next year. So, when we're doing our budget, we don't have to figure a mill or any revenue generated from property taxes into that amount. So, it kind of sets aside and then carryovers for those increases next year.
Thank you.
On average, do we know about how many claims the city has per year and how many we have this year?
He didn't give it, no. That wasn't in any of the information he had. I don't know that we had any claims.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? No, did you have a question?
No, just, I got some good news.
I mean, yes, there was a very good news.
Yeah, I had anticipated it being anywhere from 6% to 10%. I was very happy that it came in where it did, just a little over 4%.
So, you need a motion for approval, or is this just?
Just to, yeah, just to approve the renewal. And actually, I just noticed the typo on my agenda item, not '24, '25, but '25, '26. Insurance renewal with EMC and authorized the name of the site.
So.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second, second?
Second.
I'll be kidding because I heard it first.
Matt, is the 4.43, I know that was new, that's captured in there?
What was your question?
Well, the summary says 4.5.
Oh, it does.
Okay.
When I did the summary at the end of last week, I talked to him on the phone. He said 4.45. When he came in this morning with the official.
So, that's new information.
It was 4.43, yes.
So, do we need a new motion?
No, because you're just authorizing this document. Yeah, which is the 4.43s.
I need to clarify. All right, so I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Carrie's five oh.
So, my only other question is, do you want Curtis to come and speak on our insurance policy at the next meeting, or?
Is there any additional information you think that he would have that would be a benefit?
I don't think so, no.
It might be good information if he can bring, or not bring, if you could bring the answer to my question about how many we usually have, just so I can kind of keep it in my head.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if everybody needs it, but I think for me, it would just help me.
Yep, I'll get that. And we, he and I also talked about coming at least once a year and just giving a update to the council on insurance in general and some of the drivers of increases and decreases.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know how many claims like past year, year before, year before, year before, see our trend is. Just so as we're budgeting and going forward, we can think about that. Although, there's always, you can't blame the unexpected. It'd be kind of nice to know what the history's been.
Okay.
That would be my, that would be my request.
Okay, I'll get that for you.
Okay. Any other things we want to add to this floor, or I close that, the discussion? All right, seeing none. All right, we move on to appointing the park board chair. Matt?
Mayor, counsel, we held our first park board meeting earlier this month, and part of that meeting is, was designating a chair for the board. The park board group designated Niva Benton as the chair, and what we need to do to comply with the ordinance is have you, Mayor, appoint her as chair tonight with the consent of the council.
I don't have the motion book or the thing to read, sorry.
I hereby appoint Niva Benton as a park board chair and submit such appointment to council for consent.
I hereby move to consent the appointment of Niva Benton to the park board chair. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to ordinance amendment, park board meeting time.
Mayor and counsel, another park board item. The park board also decided that it would be more convenient for them to hold their meetings at 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM. Our ordinance states it shall be at 7:00 PM one night a month. So, to comply with our ordinance and make everything official, we needed to do a time change, which Andrew grew up. So, with your approval, the park board meetings will now be at 6:00 rather than 7:00.
Now, we have two park board members in the audience, so I just want to double check. Six is good for you guys, right?
Yes.
We're not changing something that can't be done. Okay. Just thought I'd make sure. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve amendments as presented and authorize Mayor to sign. Motion.
Yeah. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Moving on to change in zoning. I call agenda item 7D, by consideration of case number Z202501, a request to allow rezoning of property to the C3 general commercial district on the property in R1A, single-family, zero-lot line, ZLL district zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of the city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Let the record show that there are no abstentions and that a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned, or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area, as the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case. The planning commission held the public hearing for this case on 2/11/2025. Has the council received a summary of the public hearing filed in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
Does the council and everyone present on the case believe that the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
I will now call on the zoning administrator, Dustin Felton, to present the case report background information and the planning commission's recommendation. Dustin.
Thank you, counsel. Let's get over here to it. Z2025-01, Jeff Engler, wants to rezone from C3 general commercial district, sorry, rezone from R1A to C3, and a portion of the C3 going back to R1A. It's kind of a flip. The property owner is requesting a zone change from the R1A, single-family, lot-line residential district, C3, on a portion of the property generally located 670 feet north of Kichai Road. The current C3 general commercial district will be larger in area than a previous request, see below. The subject property is 7.886 acres and is undeveloped. The zone change will apply to the east, to the east, approximately 6.6 acres of the site, and the west, approximately 1.286 acres abutting Oliver Street, are to remain C3 general commercial district. Within the area of the commercial district, this small park is being proposed as a gathering spot with displays. The property is in the plating process and will be subject to the development standards outlined for R1A, single-family residential, zero-lot line residential district, and C3 commercial district. On May 26, 2016, the property was platted as Paramount subdivision, Lot 1, Block 1, and Reserve A. The property is currently undeveloped. In 2023, a request, Z202301, to rezone the property to R2, was brought before the planning commission and city council. Planning commission recommended not approving, and city council denied approval. Again, in 2023, a request, Z2023-02, to rezone the property to R1A residential district, with a portion to be left, the C3 commercial district, was approved by both planning commission and city council. To the north is C1, or excuse me, C2, R1, commercial buildings and the Kichai City Park. South is R1, east is R1, west is R1 and C1, undeveloped, C1 to the west. North Oliver Street is a two-lane paved arterial road with open ditches. The requested zone change is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. The future development plan map from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for arts and business district, including both commercial and housing. This change in zoning will help support commercial buildings and public spaces for art in conformance with this objective. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to the following conditions. Provide planning staff with a legal description of the portion of property approved for zone change prior to the case going to council, which it has been provided. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. Properties to the north are zoned as C2 local commercial district developed with commercial businesses. R1 developed with a city park. Properties to the east are zoned and developed as R1 single-family residential district. Properties to the west are zoned at R1 single-family residential district, developed with single-family homes, and C1 district undeveloped. Properties to the south are zoned and developed as R1 single-family residential district and C1 arts and business district. Two, the request of a rezoning is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan as discussed in this staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate a significant increase in public utilities or services. Four, the subject site is currently zoned C3 general commercial district, which will be extended. Five, the property has been zoned as C3 general commercial district since January 14, 2016. Before that, the property was rezoned from C3 to R1A, single-family, zero-lot line residential district, and R2 multifamily residential district since May 8, 2008. Six, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. The site plan shows substantial amount of buffering provided by Reserve A, which will help buffer the patio homes from abutting uses. Seven, the request of a zone change is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Eight, staff do not expect negative impacts on community facilities. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public. Here we have the aerial map of the property. South of the car wash, the gas station right up here by the number one. Zoning map showing the zoning. Future development plan map showing the approximate location. Here is this dashed line that is filled in with a light gray is to be the new C3 zone. This faded dotted line is the previous C3 that was approved just last year. All the existing around it is still going to be R1A as proposed earlier. It's just anything outside this gray zone is going to be our, excuse me, this section here is going to go back to R1A, R1A instead of C3. The legal descriptions of the exhibit. The portion that's to be zoned as C3, the portion that is supposed to be zoned as R1A. Site photos, west of the subject property, subject property looking east, north, and south.
All right, does the council have any questions for the zoning administrator? Seeing none, thank you. Oh, go ahead, sorry. Do you want to question?
So, the entire property will be zoned as C3? Am I understanding that correctly?
No.
Is there still a portion, give me a R1?
Everything that I'm highlighting here on your screen is going to be the C3. Is it not showing up on your monitor?
It's not showing up on the screen.
Fan casket. I apologize, okay. Yeah. So, that portion that's highlighted up there is going to be the new C3.
Okay.
The portion that I'm going to highlight right now.
Hopefully.
Yep. Is the old C3.
Okay, okay.
Through the research that the property owner has done, they've come to realize that they can have a bigger area for C3. The property owner knows that that's what citizens want in that area, and he's wanting to get that going. And everything outside of the new C3, the proposed new C3, all of this white around it is going to be the R1A, with the reserves staying there with nothing going on the reserve.
All right. Now, any other questions? I don't want to get anybody off, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm a slow thinker.
You're fine, you're fine. All right, seeing none, thank you, Dustin. Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? Jeff, I see you, do you have any new information going about? Have a consider.
Anything, counsel? And when we went through and redid the rezoning, and where it was all C3 and we made the R1A, we were unsure at that time how much we would need half C3. And I honestly went a little smaller than what I thought we would need because the general public wanted more commercials, so it would be easier to go back bigger than we needed. Do you happen to have the site plan I sent before that we had at the planning commission meeting? That shows the layout?
For the?
That shows the buildings?
Maybe? Do you have the hard copy that I dropped off earlier? I don't know where is that? I've got it.
Okay. Well, just want to illustrate, our overall plan has not changed on what we're doing. We do have one additional commercial building that we plan to do, so we've just extended the commercial portion, and there will be some parking back on the east half of the larger commercial lot there, and that's the reason for the rezoning, for, you know, extending the commercial portion there.
Did you say for an additional building and for extra parking?
Yes, I mean, if you remember, there was two commercial buildings and the park in the middle. We're going to do another smaller, like 3,000 square foot building on the east side to park, kind of make it a full, kind of U shape, more of a square type of area and everything like that. And then there's parking behind the first building that we're doing, which is the south buildings.
Will that change the number of houses that we?
I think it did. It did reduce a couple, or we lost three or four of the lots.
I remember it was about 20.
I think we're down to 17 or 19, something like that. I don't know, so here we go.
So, Jeff, you mentioned additional parking. About what, how many total parking places would be on the east side then? Do you have an estimated number?
I have it on my sheet right there. Don't have it in my mind, I memorized it. One of the main reasons that is to do a drive-through coffee shop that's going up there. That was the main reason we did parking over there.
Well, and one of the reasons I'm asking is to, I mean, additional parking is a benefit to the residents that do end up living in there, so that they're not parking on their residential streets if businesses do become very busy.
Or if someone has a gathering at their house too. Yeah, if someone's not parking on the street, they got to park out there and use also, yeah.
My concern would be protecting the residents from having. Yes, yeah, thank you.
Overcrowding on the parking, I understand. So, that was definitely one of the benefits of it, so. And then, kind of the northwest portion here, you'll see this is drainage, this will basically be kind of a little bit lower, I think it would be kind of a dry pond, so I'm hoping it'll end up being kind of a grass area that people can use. But it has to be able to maintain the drainage that we need to, so I'm not sure if that'll end up just being unusable. I mean, it gets around and down, I guess, when it's dry.
And where for the hard parking?
It's still the same, well, if you look on there, it shows the end between the two larger commercial buildings.
Is the, is the coffee shop the? Is the, uh, is the coffee shop the only commercial interest that you've seen so far?
No, we have two other tenants that we've had terms agreed upon, lease is not signed yet, so I, I, I can't announce them yet just because it's not my place for them.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, um, first building six thousand square feet, assuming those two leases, um, come through, we had a little over five thousand square feet of that lease, so it'll be just nine hundred square feet left in that building, so. If we have more, we'll start on the three thousand building right away, unless if someone larks up to nine thousand square foot, so.
So, while we have you here, Jeff, um, because this is a question I get asked in the community a lot, and it'd be great to, to hear from you. Is, um, of course, the final zoning has to be approved. I know you have design and financing and tenants that you have to get. Um, and weather is always an issue. But do you have any projected, um, timeline on when the project could start, when people would see anything?
When zoning plan gets finished?
When what?
When zoning plan gets finished. I mean, we've, we've committed, uh, the architect has finished, the constructors already submitted them, I think, last week. Um, so, once we get all this finished, we have a couple things we're finishing by our side on budgeting, but I want to break ground since we can.
Okay, and that's what I get asked, is, you know, people are curious to see when they're going to see something happening.
I mean, I think we know all construction publics work, my goal is to be open Q4. And half the business is up in, uh, Q4 this year, so.
That's really helpful information.
No, I, I understand, we get hold of time, too.
Here's your paperback. Does council have any more questions for Jeff? No, council, thank you.
Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead, just.
Approval of the ordinance is going to be, uh, Andrew, help me phrase this, based off of after the ordinance is reamended?
Oh, yeah, well, we need to make a correction to the, the legal description that's, that's in the ordinance that you have, so when you get to that point, if you make a motion to pass it, or make a motion to pass the ordinance, please add something like as corrected and or adjusted by city attorney, and we'll get it, we'll get it fixed for the one that gets published.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep breaking my script now.
Yeah.
Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that has not been available during the official public hearing? Seeing none. We will close the public hearing. Assuming all necessary information, which has not, because I have not really read through my other part of my script, my bad. Um, so I'm going to go through the zoning sections again, just to make sure we all agree and disagree as per my usual. The item one, the zoning use and character of the neighborhood, agree, disagree, Tom?
Agree.
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 Conformance of the request to change to the adopted and recognized comprehensive plan and policies.
Agree.
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 Adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. Agree.
Agree.
Suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted. Agree.
Agree.
Length of time property has remained vacant as zoned? Agree.
Agree.
Extent to which removal of the restriction will detrimentally affect nearby property? Agree.
Agree.
Conformance of the request to change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies? Agree.
Agree.
Impact of the proposed development on community facilities?
Agree.
Agree. Public input?
Agree.
Agree. All right.
Agree.
Now, assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation of approval, which is a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does the council have any further questions or discussions?
None.
All right, I would entertain a motion. With his change.
And we approve zoning case Z dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one and ordinance eighteen forty-seven dash twenty-four, with the attorney corrections applied in the ordinance?
Second?
I have a motion by council member Hudson and seconded by council member Brewer. Is there any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries by oh. Case number Z twenty twenty-five zero one is approved, and the approval will become effective on the date ordinance number eighteen forty-seven twenty-four is published in the Arthur Valley News. All right. Next item. Final plat, Turtle Creek Edition, S D twenty twenty-five dash zero one. This, somebody, Dustin, hi.
All right, so when we're done, I want to see everybody's paper airplanes. All right, S D twenty twenty-five zero one is for a one-step final plat for Turtle Creek Edition. Uh, worked with P E C and Josh Miller of K D Miller. Uh, the form of the plat material, it's not applicable, we do digital and paper copies, or, uh, Josh was able to, uh, get the paper copies to us. Uh, content of the plat, the name of the subdivision, um, data preparation is on there, along with controlling physical features such as highway, railroads, watercourses, and areas subject to flooding, angles and, uh, lineal distances to monuments. Uh, location of elevation of permanent benchmarks, yes. Um, all the way through angular and lineal dimensions, lot line dimensions, side lot lines, um, at right angles, consecutive lot numbers and block letters. Location of existing easements. Widths of new, uh, street right-of-way and portions. Name of each street, including prefixes and suffixes. Building setback lines, if any, there are. Uh, parcels dedicated or reserved for public or private use. Minimum pad elevation, marginal lines, uh, excuse me. Certificates as follows, we have all of them, uh, land surveyor, owner certificate, mortgage, uh, notary certificates, city attorney, governing body certificates, and transfer and register of deed certificates. Uh, title report, we do not have, uh, not applicable is the final drainage plan, restricted covenants and proposed, if any. Don't have any of those right now, but I believe there is going to be a HOA in the area, is that right, Jeff?
Yes, when we do the patio, I'm sure there will be.
Okay. Uh, vicinity map. Uh, streets and alleys, curbs, gutters, storm drainage, sidewalks, street signs, water supply, fire hydrants. Um, are all going to be yes and C, I apologize, S A. Yeah. Uh, the city. Part of the guarantors process in front of the relevant key words, okay. Uh, sewage disposal, gas service, electric service, telephone service. Uh, screen, um, including fencing and landscape plan, not applicable, but that reserve is over there on the east side. Relocation of existing improvements, not applicable. Um, all monuments been, uh, properly installed, not applicable at this point. Um, based upon information available prior to public hearings, planning staff recommends that the one-step final plat, S D twenty twenty-five zero one for Turtle Creek subdivision, be approved or accepted. Again, we have the aerial map. We have the zoning map showing the property here. Location on the future development plan map. And we have a very zoomed-in look of the plat. On the north side, we're going to have Quabira Street. And on the south side, Cherokee Drive. Jeff, I apologize, were you wanting Cherokee to wrap around, or were you wanting Turtle Creek over there?
Well, I just noticed, uh, well, I, I'm trying to get to Turtle Creek, but that street was already taken somewhere else in the county, I think. So, yeah, it has something about that.
Okay.
Um, but we wanted to go down to the two street names, and there's a, the further down the packet, it shows that I think, with it being Comanche going around. Yeah.
Okay.
And that was approved by the county?
Two, Yankee Drive.
This one?
There it is. So, this is the original plat that we had got, this is the final one that was sent in. Um, we're showing setbacks and easements, and it does show Comanche Drive right down here at the bottom, and on the east side.
I think it's based on an extension of Comanche Drive is what it is.
Yes. The plat does need to be adjusted, um, who works certificates? We need to have, let me see, Regina was on here.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that needs to be replaced with
On the other side.
A Krista Brown.
At the top.
Is it?
Yeah.
There it is, thank you. Yep. And, uh, the engineer Josh here was just informed that that one is on board, and it will get corrected. These are the legal descriptions, just like in the zoning case before. Turtle Creek, ooh, Turtle Creek subdivision. Typical right-of-way. And the zoning, again. Kind of give a, an idea of what the layout will be. Are there any questions for me?
Just take my job.
I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
You're good. Any questions, council? So, uh, if, if they were to make motions, I guess, for, thank you, Justin. Um, if they were to make a motion just with the changes?
Yeah, yeah, you can just make a motion to approve the plat, accept the dedications with the correction of the, yeah.
Any other questions, council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to prove to accept the dedications as presented with the changes that were presented.
Good, second?
Second?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Kendra, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries by oh. Move on to a final plat.
Keachai Square Shop, uh, S D twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four dash zero two.
Right. Trying to figure out why you sit down.
Trying to get through. S D twenty twenty-four oh two Von Rhodes is, uh, plating his three properties here on the west side of Oliver. Uh, the plat, during, during the plating process, um, several corrections needed to be done when it was presented to the planning commission, those have been corrected, they're listed out here. Uh, form of the plat, not applicable. Uh, is the land properly zoned for the intended use? Yes, based on preliminary plat approval, uh, that is now a yes. Uh, name of subdivision, yes, I believe so, yes. And we will continue on down. Lot lines, yes. Uh, side lot lines at right angles, consecutive lot numbers and block numbers, yes. Location of existing easements, yes. Um, uh, no, they are corrected now. Uh, certificate as follows, land surveyor's, uh, certificate, yes. Owner's certification and dedication, not applicable, mortgage holder, not applicable. Notary, yes. Uh, city attorney, that should be a yes now. Uh, governing body certificate, yes, transfers, cert of deed certificates. Title reports, yes. Final drainage plan, if required, not applicable, not applicable on the rest of those. Uh, not applicable on the, uh, improvements. Uh, since there's not going to be any streets or anything over there. Uh, sewage disposal, yes. Uh, gas service, not, um, applicable. Uh, based upon information prior available to public hearings, planning staff recommends that the one-step final plat, S D twenty twenty-four oh two for Keachai Square Shops Edition be approved. Uh, subject to the corrections as listed above, and those were met. Aerial map of the property. You've got the, uh, Jeff's property over here, the R1A. Zoned it to C1. This map is getting updated at a later time. Showing it across the street, good for housing, mixed, uh, really close to arts and business. Uh, the plat right here showing the setbacks, drainage, and utility easement here in the middle. You've got lot one and lot two, fifteen-foot utility easement in the back of the property, over here is Oliver. And I believe this right here, Chris Moreland, is going to have to be changed to, um, Krista Brown, the secretary.
Any questions for Dustin? Thanks, Dustin.
Dustin, just to double check, it is supposed to be twenty twenty-four oh two?
Yes, that's when the application was submitted, if, um,
Just double checking.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, council? So, same drill, if they approve, okay. If they approve, please make the amendment be a part of it. Yeah. Any questions, council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept dedications of S D dash two zero two four dash zero two as presented, subject to the corrections.
Second?
Second?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries by oh. Um, moving on to old business, we have no old business, moving on to council reports. Council, does anybody else have a report? Go ahead, Gary.
On March the third, twenty twenty-five, I attended the first, um, un, well, unofficial park board, I guess it was official park board. But, um, what we did was review the park board regulations. Um, we determined the chair and terms for the members, and, uh, established a meet, a meeting cadence and time, uh, on that date. So, um, it was a very successful meeting, and I look forward to, uh, future meetings in which we can, uh, uh, you know, work to support the, the park, so, thank you.
And, and did it, you feel like it went well, and do you know when the next meeting is?
Uh, oh, next meeting is April seventh, I believe, let me double check that. April seventh, at six P M is the next meeting. Um, we did have attendance of every single member there, so it was a really good start.
Awesome. That's great. And I know that a high priority is the playground equipment, and, um, that has been a hot topic I did for a year. Uh, so, I know that's going to be on, or that would be my ask of the park board is that we look um, at the plans as soon as possible, not just for the park equipment, but just for the whole park in general. Um, I know safety is high priority.
Absolutely, um, I, I'm looking forward to see where the park board goes with that. I, I am a non-voting member, so I am only a reporter.
No, I completely understand. I feel you there. All right, any other council reports? All right, you got mine. Okay, I attended SCAC, um, or the Cedric County Association of Cities on three eighth of this past Saturday. Um, it's thereby in your meeting, and we did meet at Valley Center at their new rec center. Um, it is a really, really incredible place that, according to the mayor, is a thirty-year project in the making. Um, when he was, uh, at mayor originally. Um, when he was, uh, at mayor originally, um, twenty-five years ago, he said this was a project that he really, um, has been pushing. And so, um, he's very proud of it. They've got a swimming pool, a huge, um, uh, area for kids. They have like a childcare section right when you walk in, um, a walking path in the facility, um, some, lots of workout equipment, and just a large, large facility. So, um, congratulations to them on that. So, we did get to see that. Uh, but the topic of, there was two topics of discussion. The first one, um, was appraisal rates. And, um, the Sedge County Appraiser did come and chat with us about the process. And the process for appraisals is extremely complicated to understand. Even he said that he struggles to understand it sometime and how the formulas, um, all come together. Um, it seems like everybody has a little bit of buy-in into their appraisal process. We have a piece of it here at council, our piece, the school board has their piece, the appraisers have their piece, the state has their piece. Um, and so really, I think it's how can we all work together as government agencies to figure out how to provide relief? Um, I don't think that's a one-year process. I think that's a multi-year conversation that's going to have to happen. Um, and as representatives of, uh, Keechai, we need to be talking to our legislators about how we want to see those reductions and, um, passing along our frustrations, because I know I'm frustrated, I know others are frustrated. We didn't voice our concerns with the appraiser. They can only do so much because of state statutes and their laws that they have to follow. So, yes, we can be mad at the man, but he can only do so much. He's doing his job. So, um, we, we have to figure out how to, um, work together. So, that's one, uh, one piece of it. It was, it was pro- a productive meeting, um, but a lot of heated exchanges about how we, how we fix those things. Um, the other factor is the county is going through their strategic plan, and so, uh, the PBMC, eh, from Wichita State, is doing their, um, their strategic plan. So, they asked us for input, um, as cities on how we want to see impact. And a lot of the conversation was driving towards, uh, shared services. So, if you have ideas on shared services, you would want to see more so with the county. I know these are conversations that Matt and I have had with the county already when we were talking about sales tax and, um, such, such of that, uh, back when the county was inviting us to those sales tax meetings. So, um, if you have ideas or things you would like us to take to the county, um, please let us know. Um, send us an email, talk to us. Happy to do that. Or if you want to talk to any of the county commissioners, they'd be happy to talk to you. And so that was my meeting, it's SCAC. Um, things I worked on this month, connected with, uh, the Sedge County Representatives multiple times. They love hearing from me. Uh, attended county meetings, sign-in checks, invoices, discussion Facebook posts, intersection project discussion, county updates, uh, different group discussions, bless you. Uh, meeting with, uh, city, uh, manager, oh, sorry, city administrator, not manager, he's not a manager. Um, and talked with, uh, city staff, civic groups, and different projects. Um, one other thing I want to announce, uh, is the day before the Easter scrambler, thanks Police Department, is the movies in the park. Um, so once the, their food will start at seven fifteen, and at eight P M, they will be playing the movie Migration. So, one thing we always ask is if you're going to come to the park for the movies in the park, that we keep the park clean, especially since little children will be picking up candy the next day off the ground. You don't want anything gross going into your child's mouth. So, please try to attempt to keep the park clean that night. You know it will be hard because there are spills, but you don't want anything gross being picked up. So, just a friendly reminder. And that's my council report. So, uh, we have no staff reports because that's the second part of the month unless Matt has something he'd like to say.
Yeah, I just have a couple things.
What?
So, last meeting, we talked about a budget schedule. This week I met with our finance consultants and our auditor. The audit has begun, so as soon as he is into that and has some numbers for us, uh, we will start to set that schedule. But it is anticipated that we will have a schedule for the council at the first meeting in April for the budget process. Uh, I would also like to just follow up on Joni's comment, uh, about the legislation. The city, we subscribe to the Kansas League of Municipalities, and they provide, um, lobbyists for municipalities. So, they are our biggest voice. So, we kind of let them, we submit anything, talk to them, um, and they give it to their lobbyists and do their work. We also communicate with our elected officials locally, specifically our county commissioners. They have a far bigger voice than we do as a small town, so we're in constant communication with them. So, please know that we are on top of all of that, and we do have organizations that work on our behalf, not just Keechai, but other small cities throughout Kansas to address these topics at the state level.
And I'm also a nerd, and I watch those meetings at work, so.
Yeah. And our local SCAC organization is a very good resource for that, too. That's where all your area elected officials come together. A lot of times county commissioners will come. I didn't make it this time I was out of town, but, uh, the appraiser came, and they were able to talk to him, so that's a good organization that we belong to as well. So, do you get, do you get feedback from them, to get information from them on a regular basis? Most of our conversations are at like our REIT meetings or SCAC meetings, or, you know, if we have a question, we might reach out and talk to them individually. But they listen to us, and they, our county commissioners represent us well. So, they have, they really have a pretty big voice up in Keechai, being the largest county in Kansas, so.
And I do want to say we've had a, uh, Keechai has had a better relationship with the county in the past few years. Um, I do have regular contact with them. They are my first call if I, well, second call, I call Matt first. But they're my second call when I have an issue that is a county-related thing. They always answer, they are always on top of it. I get a phone call that day if I have an issue. So, um, they are not, not hearing us. They, they are here and they aren't here now.
Yeah. Our county's very responsive. What I, historically, I have found that I don't have a lot of luck when we contact our state reps or state senators. Um, I'm sure they see it, but they don't respond, so I don't know if the call's on deaf ears or gets shuffled to a pile, but rarely if ever have I ever got a response from a representative or, or senator at the state. But always at the local level, yeah. So, as I was moving through, if you get information, appreciate you sending that back on to us. So that we can stay on top of it as well from... Yep. From now. Yeah. I will, I'll see you after.
I do have a question, um, not related, but have we heard anything on the construct, um, street construction project?
Yeah, we just had meet, meeting, our bi-weekly meeting, we meet with the construction crews, the engineers, the state. And Todd is usually there, he wasn't able to be there this week, he had other obligations. But they are still what they consider on track. They are still within their allotted number of days. We have had weather delays. Those are to be expected, uh, especially with all the cold. But they have not asked for any extra days or anything like that. They've been working down there all week. They have all the curbs and gutters poured. They were down there with their milling machine yesterday and today. We are capturing those millings and storing them at the city yards down south, so we can reuse them for whatever we need, whatever Public Works needs. Um, and I think they should start on phase two. They haven't given us a hard date. But it looks like maybe mid-April. So, their completion date for, with, within those days is still consistent with what they gave us, so.
Thank you for putting the new timeline on, uh, online or Facebook.
We post those whenever we get them and any other information we have. I'm down there daily, driving down there to see what's going on and talking with them. And unfortunately, we still have people driving through. That was gonna be my next question is, consistently see that, and I don't know, I mean, I know your guys are on top of it, but... Yeah, can't be down there all the time. I, yeah. It's just so abused, and it's going to cost the city money in the long run. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that road's not made to be driven on right now, and people use it as a through street all the time. And my observation is, I think it's abused in the long run, just my observation. Very possible, yeah, when nobody's working down there. When nobody's working down there, so just, I've noticed that when we've been out walking. It irritates me.
Yes.
I understand, I understand. It is inconvenient. Uh, this finished product's going to be so nice, though. Yeah, well, I mean, if people are driving through, yeah.
I hear two high floors with nails, I mean.
What was that?
Yes, but I'm assuming that's going to get some criminal charges, correct? No fingerprints, right? But we're not condoning that. Please do not do that. We are not saying that from the bench.
Those spike things that you guys... She did talk to me earlier this week.
Can you put them there with warning signs?
They just, yeah, yeah, I said, absolutely. They can't be down there all the time. Understand completely, it's just, uh...
All right. Uh, item eleven, executive session, non-elected personnel.
Madam Mayor, I move we go into executive session. The subject to be discussed during the executive session is non-elected personnel. The justification for closing the meeting is discussion related to non-elected personnel matters. And the time and place with the open, and at which the open meeting shall resume is eight seventeen P M, and the city council chairman.
I have a second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. As we return to the regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that pursuant to Kansas meeting, Kansas Open Meeting Statutes, no biting action was taken by the city council while in executive session. Last item on the agenda?
Adjournment.
Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a lot of motions up here, so I'm giving it to Kendra first, and then I'll give Paul the second. Um, so I have a motion by Kendra, a second by Paul, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Harry's five oh, we adjourn.